If you do do it, then I can fill it in and just send it to them.
Domestic awareness.
Yeah, or I can go down and open it up.
Yeah.
That one we did last week?
Hmm?
No, that one was down.
That was Down Syndrome.
Oh, that's right.
Let me just print it out. What is a polo passage in this?
Excuse me?
Do you know what a polo passage is?
I'm assuming it's one of the door norms. The only thing I know is called a polo passage. I don't, I can't tell you that 100%.
Like P.O.L.O., P.O.L.O. passage? I mean, I'm assuming that's a brand name, polo.
Okay, here, here, I better go.
Initials.
Did you all get one of these?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's five ones, they have two stuff we summed up.
Okay.
They'll figure out that we have a new commissioner on these days and they'll have your name on it.
It's a doorknob.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Passage, passage of the doorknob setup that doesn't need a lock.
Okay, let's take care of the minutes. We're going with that?
Going.
Um, under solid waste collection, you might want to take that apostrophe out after residents on the third line down. What is the length of the current contract with Randian? What is the length of the current contract?
It was three years since last time because he was thinking about quitting.
Yeah.
But it's normally five.
It's been five in the past?
Yeah.
Could we add that in there? Pickering reminded the board that his current three-year contract will expire December 2017. Up above, under gravel agreement, has entered into a three-year gravel purchase agreement. I mean, it's just helpful for research purposes. I don't think he told us that.
No, I don't think he told, but he didn't say. He just said his current contract was going to expire. And a motion to approve.
I would move to approve now.
You have a second?
Are we adding that, not adding that?
No, second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion's carried. We have a proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. We've been asked to declare support. We want to put our names to proclamation of domestic violence.
I would move that we sign a proclamation for domestic violence awareness month.
We have a second?
A second.
Been moved in second. It's your proclamation declaring month October, domestic violence month, awareness month. I'm sorry, but better not do domestic violence. Domestic violence awareness month. Get the awareness in there, please. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Don will type in our names. Okay, we have, uh, Lincoln County Transportation Grant application that we need to sign. After visiting with Jerry, it was changed a little bit. Says, "We, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, support Lincoln County General Public Transportation Board in their endeavors to support all residents of Lincoln County. Lincoln County General Public Transportation Bus is the only form of general public transportation service in our community that our community has and is vital asset to the members of the public that are served by the bus, which include the elderly, disabled, and those with no other means of transportation. Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will ensure that $20,000 in matching funds is made available to meet equipment needs that should arise in the future." What is your wish?
Does that mean that the state federal portion has been used to cover employee costs? Employee wages?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So then...
And benefits.
And benefits? But it's only $20,000?
That's our share.
That's our, our share.
Our share.
I thought their share was only $20,000 as well. I thought it was 50/50.
I don't think it's quite 50.
Yeah, it's not quite 50/50, but it's...
But yeah, it pays.
And that may be it.
I think they asked for 50%. I don't think they received 50% last year.
Depends on how much money they have to allocate.
It's kind of chilly in here. Cloudy, won't sleep.
It got kind of chilly last night.
I'd move that we sign the support letter for Lincoln County General Transportation Application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any questions?
Are we going to address formally the other transportation that's being provided in the county in addition to this where we're basically spending money to offer two services of the same capacity?
I think the one deals totally with meals, doesn't it?
No, we have someone using Council on Aging money to take people to Salina.
I think that's something the Council on Aging or Girls.
I'm not aware that they're going to, that's...
Well, they discussed it at the last meeting.
Well, I assume that we need to work together.
What I'm asking though is, are we going to formally address that we're funding the bus for public transportation and we're funding the Council on Aging to provide transportation? Or are we going to encourage a consolidation where people seeking public transportation are going to use one or the other? Because we're funding both.
Again, I think the Council on Aging is going to address the transportation issue there.
I'm saying, what are we going to advise to the Council on Aging? Because we're funding them 100%. They don't receive any exterior funding. We're just going to keep giving money to both organizations, letting them do as they see fit, doubling up?
I think they, they don't necessarily perform the same activity.
Well, no, I mean, there are definitely reports of Council on Aging providing public transportation to and from Salina, to and from doctor's appointments. Same thing the bus does. It's not any different.
Well, I guess my, my feeling is that Council on Aging needs to, to work with the, with the General Transportation Board and I guess Terry goes there and he can express our concerns.
I would agree with that.
You know, I don't, I guess I don't know that, that I feel comfortable making a proclamation from this board to the Council on Aging without some input from them. And maybe they need to meet with the Transportation Board and iron out their overlapping, you know, if there's overlapping going on.
Oh, I fully...
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of it, I guess. I can't address it.
Well, we're making you aware right now.
Yeah, but I mean, I was not aware.
Right. And I, I support this grant application for the bus as long as we're under the pretense that we're going to encourage people to be using this that we're funding and not, you know, seek outside other resources, depleting our funds from other...
I think, I think yes. I think everybody needs to be made aware of that, that if that's going on.
Okay, I, that sounds great.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, you second it? Or did I? Yeah.
You did.
All right, okay. Any others questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Do we need to sign both of these, Don?
Uh, the other one is authorizing Jerry to sign.
Oh, sign. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
I would move that we authorize Jerry to sign the grant.
Sign the grant.
Okay.
And I'll second. Any questions about him?
These are the same though, aren't they?
Oh, goodnight.
These two are the same.
Well, I thought they were.
Yeah, they were.
Well, they weren't different last week.
Is that it?
No, that's a resolution. Let me go grab the, sorry. They were different last week.
Okay, we can sign this one. We did this one.
Does that mean she needs two copies, I suppose?
I don't know. She signs two, I guess. You get paid the same, Alexis, whether you sign two or one.
Yes, but it's using the ink.
Charge it to the king. They've got deep pockets, remember? Did you get grant up there, Alexis?
No, no, we did not.
Okay. This one says, "We, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, on a regular session on October the 9th," which I don't know who we need to sign, change that date or not, "2017 would have approved Jerry Filbert as authorized signer when making application and/or signing necessary documents to the Kansas Department of Transportation for Public Transportation Assistance Project Funding. And if you should have questions, you may reach us at 785-524-4335, Monday, Mondays 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon." That's signed the Board of County Commissioners.
Do you have access to edit this? I would prefer that we change the date to today's date and Mondays does not have an apostrophe. It's just Mondays with an S plural.
Came up and did the inspection over head to work out near Wichita. I've got a bid in the make, I haven't received it yet, from Burgess, Salina. There is a possibility of having to change some of those doors out due to they don't have any recognizable sticker or placard on those doors or door frames indicating that they are in fact a fire-rated door, even though we know they are. It's just one of those things.
They were put in before they started putting stickers on them.
Right. I have one, two sets that I, that I have found that information on those doors. One of them on a frame, it is covered in paint, which I'll open up and expose it, for the most of them they're not. So I just want to give you guys a heads up that I will be bringing in some estimates in the future.
So what the door costs, just the cost?
I, I, your guess is good as mine. I, I, you've got to remember, this is fire equipment, so I'm sure they're not...
Same doors that have been on there since it was built, but all of a sudden they're not up to the standards.
Correct. And visiting with different people and stuff like that, you know, it's like, well, is there any grandfather in hand of anything? I don't see any, any, no, I don't see any slack in that. So, just a heads up.
What else you got up there, Greg? Anything else, problems?
No, too bad. Things going.
Are we, are we doing on capacity, are we under?
Um, we are, we've moved, well, one resident over from assisted living over to the nursing side and there's a possibility of maybe another one, but capacity on the nursing, we're doing pretty good. We've got to minnowed room, picture rooms, so we're right up there.
And the assisted living is still struggling.
The money that goes to the historical society every year, is that from the general fund?
Remodeling thing we're doing.
How are we, we're working on?
We're working on a room that they're proposing to fix up, so we're still in the process of working on that.
Well, you know, I saw a lot about that since my mother was in that facility for several years and certainly the design of it leaves much to be desired. And I can see where it would certainly be beneficial to do some, some things, but I'm not sure how you do it. But I know that my mother, I think, would have been much more occupied if there had been a little bit different arrangement of the room, the way it was built, I guess. It's just, it's just that people have a tendency to stay in bed when they can see their chair sitting right beside them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree with you.
Okay. Well, thanks, Greg. I guess if you don't have anything else?
Okay.
Let's let you go back to work.
Thank you. I agree. See ya.
Don, do you have anything else for us today?
I have two resolutions. One is that waiver, we are required to do the waiver each year. And I contacted the state to see and they said, since we've already passed the budget years, he said that he did remember them talking about it in the one meeting and telling us that we didn't have to do it anymore and, but he said the law is still there, so we should do the waiver each year and it's just on file with us. And then the second one is transferring the second half of the transportation bus money into their fund for the year.
Okay, guys, we'll take you up and then we'll take these resolutions up later. You're up.
Have a gravel agreement here with Mary Jo Simmons Trust. Okay, it's a three-year gravel agreement. The gravel, the location of that pit is in Scott Township. Southwest of Barnard, about four or five miles.
What is the status of the other pits that we haven't been hauling from that where we have piled, where we already have piled gravel?
Status as in?
As in, we were going to do a follow-up and see about, since the contract had expired and we've already sunk the cost into...
Still looking into that.
And then we haven't hauled from Wolf Creek?
Yeah. Well, we're there, there, to finish workers' project up there. Just filed a couple of places up there at the end of the day out of there.
Is this a renewal?
Yes.
It's a renewal, yes.
So do we have, are we testing this? Have we tested it? Is there a result?
We got a pile there, it's been piled for...
It's piled?
Yeah.
We've used it on several roads.
I'd move we enter into a gravel agreement, Mary Jo Simmons Revocable Family Trust.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you, Michael.
Interview was here a couple weeks ago, had an individual who'd like to employ as a truck driver.
Has he passed his pre-employment? Has he CDL?
Yes.
I'd move we employ him at Hogg as a truck driver at 12:30 an hour.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed.
Has he ever worked for the county before?
No.
You want to copy this, Don?
Yes, please.
At least not that I'm aware of, not in the highway department, he hasn't.
He has experience in the field though.
Yeah, yeah, I believe he worked for KDOT for several years in numerous locations.
Do you have a start date?
Uh, the 23rd. Been visiting a little bit with some of the surrounding counties on gravel, what they're using, what it's costing. Otto County, he's been out of the office for personal reasons here for the last week and a half, so I haven't been able to get in touch with him. But currently Mitchell County on average is around $350 a cubic yard. I think that they have different prices through different pits. They haul sand at $2.
The prices you're quoting, are you saying that's their estimated incurred cost?
No, that's what...
That's their payout?
To the landowner, yes.
$350? And sand for $2?
Yes. Ellsworth County, they don't have any pits. They would like to have a few, but they are getting all their sand from down in Allenwood, river sand and trucking it up, and they're paying $475 for that.
For the river sand?
Ellsworth County, they're township, aren't they?
Yes. County Township, yes.
So is Mitchell.
Yeah. But they still have X miles of roads.
Yeah.
Hundred square meters.
Usually.
But I'm just saying, is that...
Somewhere between 150 and 200 miles is all they have that they maintain.
The county itself?
That the only ones you got?
We anticipate hearing something from Otto County this week, maybe.
I will try to get them some other calls and see how they're doing, where they're getting that one's costing them.
I think they have a lot of rock from Chapman area in here. And I think they got some from Portside.
It's Chapman.
It's good rock, but it's all white. Yeah.
Yep, wind farms use that down there on Colt Drive on our stretch of road and it's pretty good.
Chapman, that's what we're using our yards at home if we can get it, getting it up here's a major problem.
What have your driver, your operators found about using that concrete on some of those muddy dirt roads? Have they reported?
I haven't really said anything about it one way or the other. Seemed like when they put it down, they thought it was sure going to help maybe, but like say, it really hasn't been that wet sand, so they haven't really said whether it worked or not, how good it did. It had to help.
While you're in here, I had a request for some additional gravel on 30th at the south end coming up on Highway 181. There's a hill there and a few people had asked me about that because there's a rock ledge on that downslope if you're headed south coming to the intersection there.
I can see what we got there.
I've also had some calls about highway signs, particularly along 18 for the county crossroads there that come through, being able to identify road numbers. Some of them are there, some of them are broken off, some of them are just non-existent. I was wondering if you could potentially look at how we did the road signs that you priced for at the estates at the lake, maybe get a price on that for all the cross-sections along 18. I mean, I personally would like to see that. If we're going to look at next year's sign budget, what we could do with that budget as far as those main throughways and what signs we need versus what are already there, what the, what the cost would be.
And you just want to do 18 highway, county line to county line?
I mean, I, I personally feel like that's a good place to start. I know that doesn't solve everyone's problem, but... I know that doesn't solve everyone's problem, but when we don't even have those done, you know, it might be a good place to look at starting. And some, like I said, some of them are there, but-
Yeah, if you're going to replace and we'll replace all from one end to the other.
Yeah, obviously, if we're going to do some, we just do the whole stretch.
Those fiberglass ones are going to deteriorate yet, wind some and everything else has played their role.
That would be monitoring it.
Well, those were some of the calls that I received recently, so just relaying that to you.
Get that section, maybe 14 next year or something, per se where you're at cost, honestly. Get a section a year eventually, but not get caught up a little bit.
Yeah, especially the, the intersection roads with the state routes, I think. Any update on the mobile 311 program for the mapping and charting?
Well, we finally got internet back at our shop. I haven't had a chance to visit with her, but we did go over with the employees last Monday. We are having some glitches with a few of the pads, so I'm doing some testing on that and seeing what I can find before I put a call in.
The program or the, the equipment?
The, mainly isn't revolving around the GPS end of it, locating the tablet. The GPS is turned on, but for some reason it's not ping in the tablet, so I'm just, there are several places for the settings on that, not only the tablet itself, but from within the program, so I'm testing that before I put a call into them and say, hey, it's not working, what do I need to do?
It was my understanding that the company would come out and give you-
They don't come out, they can just download online. Webinars.
So would you collect everyone that's supposed to be operating a pad and do a, like a presentation to them?
If I had the right equipment, I could potentially do that. I guess we'd have to set up a telephone system somehow, too, so we can be on speakerphone and that way we can visit about it, have audio, otherwise they just take over the computer screen and do it that way. But it may come to that, yes. A few of the guys, they had a chance to play around with it, they've had some good luck with it and put some projects in, whether or not they're real projects or not. Some of them were just made up, that all-
Test, do it.
Yep.
I'm sure, like anything else, there are going to be glitches that you worked with.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's kind of not as quick as I thought it might, but-
Or does it not have to do with the cell service availability in that area?
To some extent, yes, but I have two of them sitting right there in Lincoln and one are working, one doesn't.
Oh, well, it's obviously, but I do know there are places in the county where cell service-
There will be places that they will not work the way they wanted to due to that, you know, and that's out of our control.
I think you said, back when you were looking into this, that there aren't other counties around us using this, but there are counties that do this, county highway departments-
In the US, yes.
But not in Kansas?
Not in the state of Kansas, there is not.
Who found, who found this program?
I did.
You did? Just through searching for? Do they seem to be responsive to your questions or?
The company?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah.
So do we, do you need to contact Next Tech about the iPads or whatever they are?
One of the two, if not both, yes. I got to have time to sit down and go through all the settings on all these pads that are having some issues and see what's going on with them first.
What do we give the employees, just a 2-way radio? Or do they use their cell phones?
A lot of them use their cell phones.
But yeah, everyone does have a 2-way radio as well?
They don't have, it's mounted in the piece of equipment they're operating.
So the equipment has their radio in it?
Yes. There are pieces of equipment that do not have a radio, but typically they're with somebody that will have a radio in the area. A lot of them will use their cell phones, that's a personal choice, it's not a requirement.
What else you got, Michael?
Uh, we are just about finished up with the whacker project up there. Got some more cleaning up, a little bit shaping up, got gravel on it last week and come along pretty good.
What's the name of the company that's doing the sign project?
Martin Outdoors.
And are they close to being finished?
Yes.
They are?
Eight hundred and seven of 825 locations completed and they're planning hopefully to get done this week. We got nine more working days left on the contract.
What happens to the old signs? Do they take them away?
No, they deliver them to our shop.
We have them?
We're dismailing them.
So we could use the posts or?
We're dismailing and salvaging what we can salvage. Some of the signs are to the right standard that we can reuse, some of them wound up being recycled or sold.
So where, what types of signs can we, since they're doing all the FSA-
FAS.
Or FAS, excuse me. Stop signs and caution signs and et cetera, what can we reuse those posts for? Like street or road names or?
Not for road names, that's going to take a different post than we're using now.
But we could do other route stop signs and?
Yep.
Stop sign, curb sign, that kind of stuff.
You know, street line occurs.
So we'll potentially have 800 in some of them to sort through?
I don't think there's going to be that many. There was many damaged ones and they also put in signs where we didn't even have a sign, so, you know. There, I don't even know if we had 500. I wouldn't say that there's that many brought in.
Yeah.
These guys stand on top of it, keeping it down, so.
Yeah. Done some kind of brought in there at one range there, there was like 60 stop signs or something that brought in.
That are usable?
We could reuse.
That's all I have this week. Bob, what you got?
Yeah, like I said, finished up there at Whackers. And that ground room, that spot gravel a little bit, a couple places up there, finished out, always hauling it there. Right now, they're up there working by sporing some, cleaning out a ditch and putting in an entrance for him up there, he's wanting there, but cleaning ditch and putting a mound entrance down by Leo Lester's where he wanted, he could go down through his yard, it was a big equipment, so he wanted another entrance where you get off the field, root, have to go through his yards and they're working on that project today. Fixing some pipe, different places, I've got holes in, found some that were undermined and washed out up on county line up there. Hunter the other day, so. Caved it in, got it fixed up again, so. Just kind of catching up on a few odd jobs around here and there right now. They're hauling some crushed rock or cement, stuff out here on the water crossing out here east of town. They had washed a bunch of trash up and over it here, haul back, I don't know where it is. Land, so they're patching on it here today and somebody holes down through that root, that rock, so.
What about the, did we find a lot of bad places this last rain? Need to wire some work or?
Well, not a whole lot, but no.
I heard a call about area on Rocky Hill Road, is that, is there a bad place along Rocky Hill Road and Iron somewhere down in there?
North of there.
North of?
The north part, north mile or two.
Yeah, to north there from the highway here down through it.
Right.
Yeah, it started hauling some stuff on there when they finished up down there at West Falls on those places and then it got bagged out.
Didn't get settled in?
Yeah, we got started and finished hauling it, this is the other day. So, let's see how it works out. Got a call from Bacon, as you did there, I went down and visited him. He went down and was working on it there, right here. Get down and see what it looks like. They need to haul well material and patch a little bit on there.
Well, you know, as bad as some of those places were, there were two semi-stuck in the road and Mitchell County's gravel, so we don't have all bad places. So, you know, I think every, every county experiences that when, when it rains, you know, people just have to be a little patient and weather through it, you know?
Have you guys received any feedback from the Smart and Outdoors? I mean, I'm sure they're, they've been all over, at least this general area. Have they given you any feedback about conditions or suggestions or, I mean, they've got to have plenty of knowledge.
I haven't heard anything from them on it.
No?
I haven't really did a lot of visiting with them. Little visit with the engineer.
Bob, you were going to give me a map of the pits, did you have that?
Uh, I think I got one started up there, uh, never, you have to bring it along.
Okay. If you would bring that, I'd appreciate it.
Anything else for the boys, men today? As I have anything else right now?
We're gonna have some decent weather for a week or two.
I'll tell you, thank everybody, enjoy it. Lot of work to get done.
Days are getting shorter, sun's getting further down, things don't dry like they did in August, July, of course, it's not as hot here. Yeah, it's a lot of work, farm work to be done in the next two weeks. Okay, guys, thanks a lot. Have a good week, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution 19. Let's see. Whereas there are no revenue bond ordinances or other ordinances or resolutions of said municipality, which require financial statements and financial reports to be prepared in conformity with said act for the year December 31st, 2017. Now therefore it be resolved in accordance with the provisions of KSA 751120A by the Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas, in regular meeting duly assembled this 16th day of October 2017, that the said board, county commissioners, request the director of accounts and reports to waive requirements of the said law as they apply to Lincoln County for the year end, December 31st, 2017. Be it further resolved, that said board of county commissioners shall cause its financial statements and financial reports of said municipality to be prepared on the basis of cash receipts and distribut, distributions as adjusted to show compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of this state and witness of, we set our signatures on the 16th day of October. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions 2017-19?
No, it's a move.
Do I have a second?
I'm second.
Been moved and second. Two waves of, I think you used to call them gap requirements, didn't you? Gap requirements. No questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution 2017-20, be it resolved on 16th day of October 2017 by the Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas, in accordance with 2017 Lincoln County adopted budget, to hereby authorize the transfer of $10,000, October 16th, 2017, from the Lincoln County General Fund to the Lincoln County Transportation Bus Fund, adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, this 16th day of October 2017. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2017-20?
I assume.
Moved, do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Do we have questions? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion is carried.
I do have a question, is there a reason that it's October instead of doing it in the middle of the year? Or is that just?
I assume-
We've always only done it if they've needed it.
When they need the money.
And so if they hadn't needed, if they didn't need-
It stays in the general fund?
Yeah. And so, but the past, I don't know. And I, I don't know why we do this one by resolution, we just always have versus everybody else that we distribute.
Yeah.
Based upon the percentage.
Okay. All right, are you done, Don?
I am.
All right, Alexis?
Um, well, my first question is, what is the status of our ambulance that was broken down?
Excuse me, what?
Our ambulance that had been broken down? What, what is the situation there? Do we have, I mean, I, we haven't had a report from the department head.
I think it's, it's operating alright as far as I know. I haven't heard anything different in here.
How long was it out of commission?
Oh. I would say seven to 10 days, I, I don't know the exact number.
And were you notified as the chairman?
Was I notified of what?
That our ambulance was out of service for seven to 10 days?
Well, I think it was mentioned that it was broke down, but I didn't, I don't, no, was not told when it came back into service, no, I was not called.
I don't think it ever started, I know they never notified if a propellent ambulance broke down, they just get it fixed.
So then were we let an ambulance from Mitchell County in the meantime?
We didn't need one, we still had one, we still had two. We had the ambulance that's old and we had the other ambulance here.
I was under the impression that we were told that an emergency could be declared if we had a depletion of resources like they did when they only had one market ambulance.
Our resources weren't depleted, we still had two of the three ambulances operating.
Well, one on that side of the county, but we didn't have a backup here, so if we had had someone on a transfer, we didn't have one in the station in Lincoln to get-
When there are days when there are two ambulances sitting here and there, or an ambulance sitting in the shed and we have a run that needs another crew, that the crew out of Silver takes it, so I don't see the difference there, I mean, it's-
Well, I'm just questioning why it was presented one way-
And actually, yeah.
For Mitchell County and now for us.
I think Mitchell County was down to one, weren't they? That was my understanding.
They were down to one.
They were down to one ambulance.
It had an issue, so.
In their city center, I mean, that doesn't, that has nothing to do with their outline service. We're talking about the same thing here, one in our city center.
I don't think one out of three ambulances in the shop is a reason to declare an emergency and borrow an ambulance.
Only for Mitchell County, just not for Lincoln County?
We didn't have, we, we had no, we had two ambulances.
Mitchell County didn't have two ambulances, they had one that was having problems.
So you're telling me Mitchell County doesn't have any other outline?
Yes, they do, but they were broke down.
I think that issue's been covered extensively.
Well, I'm just wondering why it wasn't reported to the commission, why we haven't heard anything about it?
We don't hear every time a vehicle with the county alley department, they fix things all the time that break down. It's no different than, you know, those ambulances go in for, for different things all the time.
Well, we heard about it when there was a solicitation for a new ambulance because that one needed, what, I don't know, it had an oil problem? We weren't, we never did.
They needed an ambulance. There's no doubt. I mean, there's no doubt.
Well, I just find it interesting, um, that there's always a, a double standard there.
I don't see where there's a double standard at all.
It was.
We had adequate ambulances.
Well, another concern that was brought to me is apparently, um, now we're, we've been saying how we haven't had any help, that we don't have any volunteers, and now we're rejecting volunteers out of the EMS service. I was contacted by two people that have now been former employees and apparently we're rejecting volunteer services from them? Asking them, they've been asked to turn in everything, they don't get any volunteer equipment such as radios or anything like that?
I think that's something, if you wanna discuss it, we're not gonna discuss it in an open session.
You're calling for an executive session?
I'm not.
Well, I'm discussing it now. I mean, I've heard repeatedly for ten months how we can't find any volunteer help, and now I'm notified that our former employees are volunteering their services and we're rejecting it.
Man, I think there's a reason, but I'm not gonna discuss it in an open session. Number one, you know, I don't know exactly what the situation is, so.
So if we're rejecting services from people who we've employed, why didn't we fire them if there was such an issue with them?
I'm not gonna talk about it, that's just, you're in open session.
Well, they're no longer our employees, so you can't go into executive session, it's not an employee issue. If there was someone that we had hired that had posed a serious problem, would we not have been notified and had an executive session already? Why is it post-employment on their own decision to leave that now I'm hearing that something was wrong? Or that we're not, or that we're going to refuse their volunteer services?
I'm not aware actually of what you're talking about, so. I, I have an idea in my mind what one of the issues is, but I don't strictly from a non-commissioner standpoint.
Okay, well then, I, that brings me to this topic, which is completely relevant then. I move to create a resolution for yearly county employee evaluations according to the existing employee handbook.
Do I have a second? It dies for lack of second.
So my question is, if we have employee evaluations listed in the handbook, why are you not doing them?
I think this question's been raised several times, it's been discussed.
That doesn't answer my question. If it's in the employee handbook that we will be doing employee evaluations, why are you not doing them?
Do we have anything else come before this board?
Yes, my question is, if it's in the employee handbook, why are we not doing it? We still haven't answered.
Man, I agree with the same answer, we've discussed this numerous times in the last few months. I don't see any need to discuss it again.
There has been no conclusive discussion, there's just been you saying that you don't think they're necessary.
You didn't get the answer that you want.
No, you've told me that.
Continue to answer, ask the question.
No, you've told me that you don't think they're necessary, you haven't told me why you don't do them, yet they re, yet it remains as part of the employee handbook. That's not the same thing.
Like I said, you didn't get the answer you wanted, so you wanna continue to discuss it.
No, you didn't give an answer to the question at all.
You just said that I gave you an answer, you just, you just stated the answer that I gave you. It's just not good enough for you.
No, the previous question was, why are we not doing employee evaluations? And by your attitude here, just looking up at the ceiling as if this isn't important, you're indicating that you don't think that they're.
No, it's the fact that we've discussed it numerous times, you just don't like the answer that you get.
No, but the question now is, why is it existing in the handbook? I've asked you about the employee evaluation, I get that you don't wanna do it. You know, you don't care what the evaluation says about an employee, you don't even care to make sure that the evaluations get done. You've made that clear, both of you, multiple times. I understand that. My question now becomes, why is it in the handbook that you've approved in the past, yet you do not follow your own handbook? It's a new question, Terry. Okay, so then I move to edit the Lincoln County Employee Handbook to remove employee evaluation section.
Do I have a second? Dies for lack of second.
I move to schedule the end of the month meeting to an evening time to encourage public attendance.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
Okay, now, you should probably think about what this indicates, just as a forewarning. I move to create a countywide newsletter from the commission outlining observations and objectives of the board prior to the next fiscal year.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
So you've indicated a refusal to promote public awareness by encouraging public attendance at a meeting that's not Monday morning when, when working people have to be at their own jobs. And now you've refused to even communicate via a mail-out just to notify your constituents of what the commission is doing or what they plan on doing. Why is that? Am I to assume that your silence means you don't care what anyone thinks besides yourselves?
I talk to my constituents constantly, every day.
There's no way that you can talk to a thousand people every day, Terry, you and I.
I didn't say every one of my constituents.
You said your constituents. You have more than a few constituents. So you're indicating that you talk to a few.
I don't talk to the same few every day either.
So you communicate with all of your constituents on even an annual basis, you're willing to say?
Probably not, not all of them.
But you're refusing to do any kind of public notification from the commission to communicate any of our intentions?
I believe the county newspaper carries the commission minutes every week. And I know people are reading them because they call me, to me, I even get letters in the mail about them. So I believe we are communicating with the public in the official pa, county paper of this commission, so.
But you're not willing to go above and beyond to communicate any future projects or plans?
I have communicated several times with people, in fact, I've led several town meetings. People know that they can reach me by my telephone and I will listen to them.
Okay, well, I'm sure that you all got an email because I had reached out to the county attorney, um, seeking her opinion so that we could have something to go on for this board. Um, and she had indicated in her letter to all of us that if we still wanted her opinion, that we would do that in an official motion. We don't necessarily have to have her opinion, I was just giving her the benefit of primary contact to, you know, bring her opinion to the table, but I move to request the opinion of the Attorney General regarding the potential conflict of interest in Lincoln County between the county attorney office and O'Hare Law LLC.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
So if you're not willing to solicit an opinion of the Attorney General, are you just going to?
I don't see any need to solicit an opinion of the Attorney General on the relationship that you're talking about.
So you don't see it as a conflict of interest?
I do not see it as a conflict of interest.
That you negotiated a contract with the county attorney for a private law firm?
This commission stands adjourned until Monday morning at eight o'clock. Thank you.
You're welcome. Don, I guess you better give me two segments next week since they.